All right, good evening to everyone. October fifteenth, Mount Vernon City Council meeting to order. Just one item on the agenda under consent agenda. It should read October first, not September seventeenth. Other than that, I believe the agenda is set.
I will approve the agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is communications. Anybody that would like to address the council, please do so now. Seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Perpetual council minutes, October one, 2018. Perpetual liquor license for the Lincoln wine bar.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is ordinance nine seventeen dash two thousand eighteen A. Repealing chapter one sixty-five zoning regulations and zoning map and adopting a new chapter one sixty-five zoning regulations and zoning map included thereof. I assume Chris noted an add, correct?
Nothing additional.
We're just on to the... I'd approve the third and final reading of... I just lost it. Ordinance nine dash seventeen dash twenty eighteen A.
I'll second that.
Comments? No comments? Roll call, please.
Roberts?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
All right, next item. Oh, wait. No, that's right. All right. Ordinance ten one, twenty eighteen A, appointing chapter fifty-five twenty-one livestock with the Mount Vernon municipal code. Again, Chris noted an add, correct?
No, I did receive an email today that Christie approved and the language changed, so she did review it and sent me a written email that meet all of her concerns.
Good.
I get approval from her husband. It's okay. It's approved.
So that's it. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number ten dash one dash twenty eighteen A and appointing chapter fifty-five twenty-one livestock in the Mount Vernon municipal code.
Second. Comments? No comments? Roll call, please.
West?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
All in.
Yes.
All right, next item. Resolution for approval, resolution ten fifteen two thousand nineteen A, approving the annual financial report for fiscal year twenty eighteen. Chris?
This is an item that we complete every year, typically just after we get all of our audited information back, but all of the accounts are listed. If you have any specific questions, we operate on a cash basis. Nothing really jumps out here. I think next fiscal year, you'll see some numbers that probably will make you wonder, but that'll simply be because we have five million dollars in borrowing coming in plus another one point six potentially in spring with SRF funding. So our numbers are going to be extremely skewed. This looks normal compared to if you compare our revenues to our expenditures. Next year is not. And whenever you're following that, you'll see kind of a little bit different situation.
Anybody have any questions? Do I have to take a motion?
I have no questions. The party addressed, so I would move a motion to approve the financial report for fiscal year... Annual financial report for fiscal year twenty eighteen.
I'll second that.
No comments? I would just, actually, one comment I would make, not to this specifically, but in general relative to our last meeting with the financial health of the city. I just want to commend previous councils, current Chris. I mean, that AA minus, it was impressed by that, so... And what we're seeing here, I think, is why we're doing as well as we are. And it would get the bids that we got on that five million dollars, so I just wanted to commend everyone involved.
And let's just all agree to call it AA minus, not AA negative.
Right. That's what I did, right? So, yeah. Anyway, that was all.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Lisa?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Roberts? Yes.
All right. Call it A slash for height. All right, next item. Resolution ten fifteen two thousand eighteen B. Appointing paying agent bond registrar and transfer agents, approving the paying agents, bond registrar, and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of the agreement.
Yes. This resolution and the next resolution are both from the bond attorney. I did not manage to put that language. So this is identifying banker's trust as basically the letting bidder finalizing the paperwork and allowing us to go ahead and prepare for the transfer of the five million dollars in funds.
Any other questions? Tom, any thought?
Where were we at on the other... Didn't have approval for another five hundred thousand that we're going to wait on to see where we're at on that?
Yeah, so we're going to wait to see how the bids come in for the project itself. And then some of the additional funding, fundraising dollars, we'll see whether or not we need to use that additional five hundred thousand. By waiting on that five hundred thousand until next fiscal year as well, it makes sure that we don't dip even further into that eighty percent. So I will say that the S and P knew of all of that. They knew that we might even go back to get the extra five hundred thousand as well, but it's more or less a timing issue. If we need to, we'll probably borrow it right before we need it at the end of the project. Could be November or December next year before we make a decision whether we would need to move forward with that last five hundred thousand.
With that, I would move approval of resolution ten dash fifteen dash twenty eighteen B.
I'll second.
Any comments? No comments? Roll call?
Rose?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
West? Yes.
Please. Yes.
Okay, next item. Resolution ten fifteen two thousand eighteen C. Authorizing and providing for the issuance and levying a tax to pay the bonds, approval of the tax exemption certificates, and continuing disclosure certificate. Basically, is that the same thing, Chris?
Yeah, basically, this illustrates a fifteen-year note. These are general obligation bonds, so you could technically levy to cover these expenses if you had to, but of course, they're going to be paid with sales tax and tip dollars. So page nine is the estimated principal amount and scheduled repayment, if anybody wants to look at it. So this bond will be paid off in 2033.
No questions, Tom? Make a motion to approve resolution ten dash fifteen dash twenty eighteen C.
I'll second.
No comments? No comments? Roll call, please.
Roberts?
Yes.
Roberts? Yes.
Okay, next item. Resolution ten fifteen two thousand eighteen D. Authorizing and providing for the issuance and levying a tax to pay the bonds, approval of the tax exemption certificates, and continuing disclosure certificates. Basically, is that the same thing, Chris?
Yeah, basically, this illustrates a fifteen-year note. These are general obligation bonds, so you could technically levy to cover these expenses if you had to, but of course, they're going to be paid with sales tax and tip dollars. So page nine is the estimated principal amount and scheduled repayment, if anybody wants to look at it. So this bond will be paid off in 2033.
No questions, Tom? Make a motion to approve resolution ten dash fifteen dash twenty eighteen C.
I'll second.
No comments? No comments? Roll call, please.
Roberts?
Yes.
West? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next item. Resolution ten fifteen two thousand eighteen D. Authorizing and providing for the issuance and levying a tax to pay the bonds, approval of the tax exemption certificates, and continuing disclosure certificates. Basically, is that the same thing, Chris?
Yeah, basically, this illustrates a fifteen-year note. These are general obligation bonds, so you could technically levy to cover these expenses if you had to, but of course, they're going to be paid with sales tax and tip dollars. So page nine is the estimated principal amount and scheduled repayment, if anybody wants to look at it. So this bond will be paid off in 2033.
No questions, Tom? Make a motion to approve resolution ten dash fifteen dash twenty eighteen C.
I'll second.
No comments? No comments? Roll call, please.
Roberts?
Yes.
West? Yes.
Okay, next item. Resolution ten fifteen twenty eighteen D. Approving the final plant, Platte of Stone Brook, six additions to the city of Mount Vernon.
So this one's... This subdivision probably isn't quite as far along as Springmont Heights was. However, Mother Nature has not been overly nice to us this past fall. So this was a decision made to allow them to move forward with the final Platte, even though they're talking about proof rolling the streets tomorrow. So I mean, they're about two weeks away from probably paving for sure, but they can't build a house out there until all the infrastructure's in. They have posted a performance bond, and the amount is short of three hundred fifty thousand dollars to cover any of the expenses. Our engineer has signed off on that dollar amount is what is needed, should they happen to fail between now and when the house is ready to be constructed. So planning and zoning, did review the final Platte, voted six to zero to approve moving this forward. All the documentation has been submitted. We're... The developer's agreement specifies a month for them to get the remaining items completed with a one-month extension by staff. If Mother Nature cooperates, they should get most of it done in this first month. Might be some title that needs to happen, but...
Quick question from the floor?
Yes, please. Come forward.
Just out of curiosity of my own part, what is the additional cost to the city of Mount Vernon for the Stone Brook project?
It's a difficult one to quantify. Initially, all the infrastructure is new, so therefore, the additional cost more or less comes in police protection. There was an older study, and I don't want to put anything out there that isn't correct, but it used to be for every tax dollar in residential that we received, that residential unit utilized about an dollar twenty-two worth of taxes.
So there's no additional cost other than police protection?
Initially, yes. I mean, like I said, as long as the infrastructure is constructed and we have safeguards that say it will be, we shouldn't have to necessarily do outside of general maintenance anything specific to this area. So for the next ten years, the infrastructure should be fine. Now, I would say that is on the city to crack seal the concrete and make sure that we stay with the upkeep, and if we don't, then some of that...
But the additional sewage, infrastructure, and that is...
Is all paid by the developer.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I had a citizen's question today, purple to this discussion probably, but with the phases, and there's five phases, and that's always been out there, but with one and two getting done, this is from a resident on Fifteenth, and it's probably more directed to Chief Shannon, but thinking that when one and two get done, that will Fifteenth become more of a throwbare between, you know, connecting the west side of campus and so on, to Palisades and/or the highway, or the new highway. And I understand the way that, you know, it'd be ideal if the east-west arterial, the Third Street West, and the north-south arterial could get done earlier, but I know that's not the way it's framed at all, and that's not the way it's usually done. But I don't know if there's... Is it... How big a problem is it on Fifteenth? I know some of the residents here that are on Fifteenth currently now as far as volume and speed, and are there some things that we may need to do temporarily with speed bumps? I don't know. Or more monitoring of activity in that street as time goes on, especially when the north extension, the Part Two gets done. So I'm not sure there is an answer to that question, but I just wanted to pass on that observation from a citizen who lives on Fifteenth, recognizing that's more of a straight shot. Now, Thirteenth was the first one in, and even that was useful a bit, but now it's, you know, that's got a lot of curves in it, but Fifteenth becomes a straight shot. And even when Seventeenth comes in, that's not going to be as direct, so...
Depending on speaking, the answer will be yes. I will say, my answer back to those that will ask the question is, I think you'll see traffic patterns change two or three times through the course of this subdivision. You're also going to see a change when Palisades changes as well, and the Irish Ridge versus that ending on Highway Thirty as well. So I think, again, we're going to see numerous changes. The good news, I would say with Stone Brook is, from a density standpoint, you're talking about larger homes, your vehicle trips, travel per day are time-sensitive for the most part, so early morning...
Rush hour times.
Yeah. People are going to... It wouldn't matter if we had Thirteenth, Fifteenth, Seventeenth. I mean, they're going to use a north-south route only because we don't have one specific with the school kind of located where it's at in Evraveen. I don't know that we're ever going to be able to distinctly change those patterns until we make a connection to the very north. And again, when we do, we have an intersection, a five-way intersection to figure out as well.
Well, I was just going to say, we're not forgotten from putting stops when we have to.
No, I mean, from traffic control devices will help when they're strategically put in place. We do have some speed bumps already in the subdivision, and we can continue to monitor that as well. They don't... Sometimes they actually do more harm than they do good, because people will slow down to over them and then floor it, and then, you know, so... Not that, you know, we are definitely causing a safety, but at this juncture, we're talking about fifteen lots here. I believe eight more lots when the cul-de-sac is put in, and then on the north side, there's a park that crosses in between, so there'll be some townhome duplexes that'll be on the north side of the park. They're actually constructing the water and sewer道 today.
I just don't understand what the concern is. I mean, we as citizens deal with traffic all over, I mean, on Third Street, Third Avenue. I mean, what...
If it's a growing town, you're going to get more houses, you're going to get more traffic. You've got to be aware of that, so...
It's the same, Mike. I just don't understand that. Candlestick, right? Kind of the same conversation that some of those residents have dealt with.
Yeah, it's new. I mean, it's not something that they've dealt with, and so there will be a transition period, no doubt.
Well, and with the bypass coming in, that's going to shift some stuff.
Yeah, the whole area, like I said, you know...
The whole corner of town over the next ten years, those traffic, to your point earlier, those traffic patterns are going to change multiple times as the different phases come in. But I mean, I understand their concern. Everybody wants to know what's going to be happening, and, you know, as the city comes out, you know, we're going to work with the police as best we can to make sure that everything stays the same.
And the nice part is that the police chief actually lives over in that neighborhood, and Parks and Rec is over there, so we get good intel. They complain a lot.
The basic plan hasn't changed that much.
No, it hasn't.
This went out there for a decade plus, so it's not like it's... Yes, you maybe got charmed into the fact that it was low traffic and low traffic for quite a while, but there's no...
Actually, this plan probably has, without going and looking at the previous model that had been out there for a long time, you know, this has significantly less lots and probably significantly less traffic than...
You're right.
Lots, I'm sure.
Did, so...
That's my way. Citizen comment.
Good. No, it's good feedback. Anything else? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution ten dash fifteen dash twenty eighteen D. Correct?
I'll second. Any comments? Roll call, please.
West? Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
All right. Next item, motion for approval, consideration of claims list.
I have one question on here, only it's kind of ancillary to it, but the S and P Global Analytical Service for Community Sales, that was the digging the test wells, correct?
No, that is the AA minus.
Oh, oh, S and P. There we go. Okay, thank you. Well, now that my brain is on those test wells, have we got the results of those yet? And maybe this isn't the point where we're...
No, they have submitted the application, the building permit application, and we just identified the address of that lot, so the expectation is next week.
The document, they can find out what the story is.
Yeah, we should have some updates.
Thank you. With that, I would move approval of the claims list as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, special consideration of a public works vehicle purchase.
So Nick provided you a memo, and obviously, he's here to answer any questions, but, you know, this is a situation where I think Nick's work since he got here has actually helped quite a bit, because he's been tracking how much money we're putting in specific vehicles. The diesel F-250 that we're referencing here has already had close to ten thousand dollars worth of work, needs about five thousand dollars more, and the replacement is twenty-seven thousand. So at this point, we're talking about almost spending half of what we need to buy a new vehicle. It's an unexpected expense, not necessarily something we wanted, but they're talking about giving us ten thousand dollars as a trade-in value as well.
Correct.
So it's almost a twenty-five thousand dollar swing.
What's the... I mean, if we take out the... What's the expected replacement on an O-nine like this? I mean, where in the... If it was...
When were we planning?
Yeah. If it was just normal, you know, kind of whatever?
So we have a rating system.
Okay.
So it's all based on this criteria. And the criteria on the top is it gets points against it. So as... The more mileage it gets, then it gets a point. The higher the point system, then that's kind of when it starts qualifying. So we do this with all our equipment, so it kind of gives everyone a fair assessment of what's going on with the whole fleet. So, and that's when two thousand fifteen started keeping track of what we're spending on each vehicle individually instead of just as a whole.
Sure.
And it's kind of, you know, it's shown us that, hey, maybe this isn't something we should keep throwing money at, and we continue to do that.
Right.
And there's other criteria, such as just the overall condition of it. That's more of a judgment call, but, I mean, you can come down and look at our trucks, and we're trying to be pretty, you know, lenient on that. And then reliability section is, you know, how many times did the vehicle actually down a year, or it's in the shop, stuff like that. So the more of that, then it gets a different point system. So I stole this from the city of banking, because they were having issues with, you know, every five years, they wanted a new truck, and someone came up with a system of, hey, maybe there's an actual system we should be using. It doesn't always...
Sure.
Go by the program. I mean, there's some pieces of equipment in our fleet that are just so old that the age just puts them outdated, but we still keep adding those just due to cost and how many times we actually use it a year, so...
It's awful sad, because, I mean, in all reality, it's not that old of a truck, and it doesn't have that many miles on it, especially a diesel, but I'm sure probably all the short trips.
I would agree with you. So the issues we have with the newer diesels, and these two trucks, the two trucks that you're looking at on this page are both diesel, and we use them to push snow, just parking lots and parking areas. But I think prior, they would maybe use them on the streets more, and we've kind of went away from that. And now, we're using it as a service vehicle, we're pouring concrete on one side of town, and we just need to drive it back and forth to that project. So currently, today, I was taking the new hire around, and the truck came up that said regen. Well, in order to regen it, you need to drive down the highway ten miles for it to go through a full system. And just, to me, these two vehicles, both of them, don't make sense being in our fleet when we can still push parking lots with a gas engine. The maintenance cost on these is far outweighed what a gas truck would. And I would agree that it's the newer truck. It's one of our newer trucks. If you look at the rest of the fleet here, some of them are much older, but it's frustrating at that point. My fear would be we put this five thousand dollars into it, and then we have something else go wrong with this diesel, so...
Yeah, because they usually cost a little more, but they're supposed to last for hundreds of thousands of miles.
Well, we have one of those, we're going to keep it.
Which is probably why we're getting the ten.
Thanks for the analysis.
Yeah. So from a budget standpoint, Chris, what do you recommend, or what's...
Right now, we're fairly new into the fiscal year. The issue at hand really is, normally, we split our crack sealing and seal coat projects over two fiscal years, start in June and kind of end in July. This year, we got billed for just about all of it after July one, so road use tax, next budget actually started slightly more than what it needed to be in this...
We're doing that.
Normally speaking, they should be somewhere around twenty-five percent, twenty-three, twenty-four percent at this point this year, and that budget's closer to thirty-seven percent. The good news is the money that would have been used in last fiscal year is still sitting there, it just didn't get used in the last fiscal year. So it's not like the road use tax money gets transferred into the general bond, so I won't say it's an ending fund balance, but it does have monies available, so we will likely have to do a transfer at some point. Depend, you know, we could have a good winter again. Not foreseeing it right now, because Mother Nature hates us, but if we do, we might still be okay come June, and we just decide to wait, do the crack seal, and seal coat again like we did this year. But at this point in the year, I mean, the additional amount isn't going to hurt us any worse than trying to spend five thousand dollars to replace or continue to make it sustainable, so... There'll be some other projects, I'm sure, that Nick has talked about doing, that we typically wait till spring to see kind of where we're at in budget. We probably won't be able to do it kind of hold line with the tax a little bit more, but expect the transfer to be part of the transfers in the spring, but we might be able to get away without it. I just... We obviously need the truck, because we use it on parking lots, but I really can't stomach putting another five thousand dollars in, bringing that total to fifteen thousand dollars, and it's, you know, diesels are nice if you were going to plow more with it and not use it the way that they're being used today. It is a sensible purchase.
Anybody have any questions?
My only question, and it's not knowing what is that we like, you know, what if we do have at winter where we need to plow more? So what am I missing?
We still wouldn't use this truck, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
In the past, so, as Nick made sure by, in the past, they would use the two-fifty and the three-fifty on the city streets, and now we've replaced that with a five-fifty, a four-fifty, a two thousand fourteen single-actle dump truck that they didn't have prior, and also a two thousand six single-actle dump truck. So you see bigger trucks out there with bigger blades, and the three-fifty and the three-fifty are predominantly, you'll see them uptown in the parking areas or the city hall, the fire station, the areas that we can't get the bigger trucks in.
They're actually using this truck in the... It's a commercial blade, but it's not constructed the extent that we normally would use, so typically speaking, we would... If you were to go across the state and say we're using a two-fifty with basically a parking lot blade, but it's not the norm. They just don't hold up well. They'll hold up fine maybe through the season, but there's a reason trucks look like they do that are plowing streets and have the power that they're using.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Thank you, Nick.
Nick, what's your thought on the 2009 Eldon drive zone? Is that one going to be holding up, or obviously you can't make any predictions, but?
Right, and we just had that at the shop, getting the front end repaired because of plowing with it, just even the small plows, they take a, those trucks take a beating. So we'll try to hold on to that through another season. I'm currently, you only have one fleet rating work break because I'm still working on that, so working on the other vehicles through that, so getting all the numbers input. But I'm hoping that, this would actually be the updated overall, like, that's what it came out as overall. So it qualifies, but it's on the lower end of qualifying for replacement. So, but I would foresee us replacing that with a 350 gas that we could also, so once in a while we need to throw a trailer on these trucks, but we have a 450 and a 550 that we predominantly, with all the equipment, we fill those in. And the 450 has the same engine, but we plan on trying to just make that last.
Good idea, okay.
Thanks for the analysis, definitely.
Yeah.
It does.
All right, next item, discussion and consideration of Mount Vernon Fire Department's grant application to systems to firefight and train program.
In your packet, I said that this is kind of a placeholder. I did get a little bit more information today, so just kind of to brief it up, thank you. So the council did in the CIP earmark $50,000 for this fuel station. The fire department's going to try for an AFG grant. I do need a motion allowing the fire department to utilize the city's DONGs number, the federal ID number, in their grant application and allow the mayor to sign a letter of support. So this is a project that was already technically funded by the city, but this would reduce obviously our out-of-pocket expense. So the motion today is just basically giving them approval to utilize that number and the mayor for to sign a letter of support at some point in future.
The grant doesn't lock us into anything we weren't going to do anyway?
Correct.
It doesn't say you have to use it in X manner, and that is not what we were planning.
We had already earmarked $50,000 out of the, we have a CIP specific to the fire department, so it's a voter approved, so I think.
How much is the grant for?
She hasn't sent the final grant application over to me. From a timing perspective, I figured even if it were $5,000, it's better than nothing. So I would expect typically it's over 50%, though.
There's your truck.
So that's it?
I'd move approval of the AFG grant application.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. That good for you, Chris?
Yep.
All right, next item, the Mount Vernon Police Report. Chief does not look this tonight. Obviously, we have his report in front of us. Anybody have any questions?
Just a brief update to his report. We did have a accident involving a deer, receiving estimates today in the $2,000 to $2,500 range.
Involving one of our vehicles?
Yes, one of our police vehicles was actually, one of our officers was transporting a prisoner. Wasn't, I mean, significant, but you know, anytime something happens in the front end of those vehicles, it seems like just $2,000.
$2,000, apparently, is a bad.
Yeah. Just an update, there was one thing that he was gonna, I think, add to.
And everybody was okay?
Yeah, it wasn't, I don't believe, a hard hit. It did involve one of the headlights, though, and that's like $700, $800.
Am I missing something? Were there no roundabout accidents?
Yeah.
First time in a long time, it's over.
I don't think there's ever gone.
Speaking of roundabouts, are we supposed to be seeing that? Need to report sometime?
We'll have the report, we'll leave it. I need to get back with him as far as does he need any more projects, can move forward, when. So it'll be part of the CIP discussion that we have this year as well.
All right, next item, Mount Vernon Public Works Report. Anything else to find out to the council or?
I'd just like to add on the training portion. We had three guys go for training, well, two guys went for training. One of them was the instructor, and Jacob, our new hire, took the snowplow training. So just kind of walk them through proper techniques for plowing, puts them through a course, and then gives them proper training on when you should be using certain materials and kind of rates, stuff like that, temperature changes, stuff like that. But then we had two guys go compete in the rodeo, which was Thursday. So it's a team effort on the snowplow, so both drivers get a chance, they drive through half the course, and they switch drivers. They're scored, and most two guys got 37th place out of over 50 drivers. And then Eldon participated in all the events. So out of all the guys that participated in all the events, he came out 16th overall, so I thought that was pretty cool.
Are they gonna be sweeping that rock pretty soon?
They came through and swept up some of the loose rock already, and then we're gonna sweep the streets at the beginning of November. So we can, it's never a good time because we're trying to wait for leaf pickup, and it's never, I don't know that we should, we could almost go out every week during the fall.
Cars park all over the place, too.
That's the hard part, yeah. Okay, thank you. Next one. Next item is the Mount Vernon Parks Director Report. Matthew, what do you got for us?
Oh, I've got lots of stuff for you, but I will only touch on one. I would like to take this opportunity to invite everyone out to the Nancy Darian Huffman Dog Park on Saturday from 12 to 2. We're celebrating the five-year anniversary of that dog park.
Aren't we just been five years?
I know, it's been five years, actually, so just wanted to take that opportunity. Thank you. Any questions for me?
You guys keep track at all? I mean, is there any way to track how many people are using it?
Oh, we could track it by doggy doo-doo bags.
Well, there you go. That is one way to learn.
I could tell you at 5:30 tonight, there were 15 dogs down there.
I know, there, I think it's really, the use has gone up since I.
It has, and I can tell you from doggy doo-doo bags and purchases, it has gone up quite a bit. Thank you for that depth. We used to purchase maybe, I'd say 500 to 1,000 bags in a three-month period, or six-month period. Now we're probably doing that in three-month period. So there's a lot of frequent users there on regular occasions.
Thank you, Matthew. Next item, COP.
So as my staff and I are getting ready to start looking at the CIP, I sent out the goal setting, final draft for you to kind of review. The reason for that is we use that as somewhat of a basis for us to, as we start planning for CIP-related items. For the most part, we had a solid year, obviously, which is a testament to both council and our staff. But I need you to start looking through some of the secondary programs and identifying possibilities for those projects as well. I also just, again, these are all to get your minds thinking, franchise fees. We have about $41,000 in there now, and I expect about another $60,000. None of those funds have been earmarked for anything. We did decide that on that $40,000, we might hold off on it until we knew final dollar amounts on the bridge and the wagon pass. We'll have some remaining bond funds to cover those expenses, but may not get all of them. I am working on the annexation plan for you now, but we changed that from a plan to kind of a one or two-page memo, so it shouldn't be very much. The bypass plan is actually in the works. The old fire station site development, we've had that conversation and had a bit more of that conversation tonight, so there's some things in the works there that may or may not change the scope of that project. The train sound is under study and already within the CIP, so there's kind of a whole lot more that we have to deal with that until we finalize the dollar amount and then decide where to stick it. So we've already updated the handbook, the demolition ordinance, we're still waiting on the copies, so I was hoping that I get it this week. We have, for the most part, got most of our maps updated as far as what we can today. We re-signed our an agreement for the GIS system. Others now on board, so we've made significant strides there. So that kind of basically mules us with the number of areas assisted living, which isn't exactly in my staff's hands, per se. So just wanted to get this back in front of you, kind of let you know where I'm going with it. But to give you some idea, on last year's, some of these will be carryover. The wagon pass, the first year bridge, they were both scheduled in this fiscal year. May still get done this fiscal year, I'm just not sure whether or not from a timing perspective, so they might be a carryover. Elliott Trail probably has to have more discussion based upon the fact that we have a potential trail on the food and wellness center from the wellness center up to the high school. We also have nature park, so depending how well those dollars come out. So Elliott could get moved again. UV disinfection definitely will start this year. I don't know if we'll borrow the funding this year, but that can be a carryover. The body cap was purchased, the police vehicle was purchased, and the Kubota was already purchased. We got the land acquisition for Public Works. The community center is, I'm gonna be waiting on those bids come the 30th. Security upgrades, if you haven't actually stepped foot inside the door, you can right above the door, walking into our offices, you can see on the television above us, all the security cameras, angles. So, and then of course, fuel station we just discussed tonight. So we have a number of other projects, but I don't want, obviously the CIP just to be specifically about projects that are coming from staff. You know, your input is definitely needed. So we, again, will bring kind of this five-year plan to you. Some, again, some of these will be identified as carryovers, so you have one big, I'd love it by seven teams sheet that'll talk about next fiscal year, and then a series of others that will kind of list the upcoming projects. But really, like I said, all I wanted to do was kind of get this back into you and give you an update on where we're at on your priorities. And, you know, we've made significant strides. Most of your projects have either been started or in process right now. Questions?
Are we planning a, maybe not bringing a consultant in again, but another work session to go through where we are and where we want to go, or was the?
I leave that up to the council. I'm willing to do either. I don't know that we would have to, I mean, I think bringing a consultant maybe every two or three years.
It's kind of.
Works quite well.
We're only working here, so.
Certainly, we have a starting point for discussion.
If you can, you know, my staff and I will send the rest of October and maybe like the first week of November finalize in the CIP, but maybe right before Thanksgiving. We tend to have lighter meetings.
Obviously, there's one way to the election.
Yeah. It would be nice, hopefully we'll have a full strength back up there. So if we can kind of hold off until the election's over, then we'll be back to full strength. And then, you know, the last time we did this, we had council meeting, and we just kind of broke off in a work session and had a little dinner in between, so it seemed to work quite well, and saves people some Saturdays.
The other thing that I noticed in here, one of the recommendations from the consultant was revisiting this on a formal basis quarterly. And I'd like to see that as we, and I don't know that we, just as a discussion item, just as a quick, like, exactly kind of what you just did. Here's where these 15 things that you guys identified stand. Here's the block on this one, we're 40%, you know, whatever.
Having the list show up.
Yeah, just to keep it in front of our minds, so that if we are waiting on something from someone, perhaps really to do a demolition ordinance, we know that, you know, we know where that is, and we can kind of hopefully.
So we don't lose sight of it.
So we don't lose sight of things, exactly.
Yeah, and you know, and I, you know, I will definitely take that on my shoulders. The community center is a monstrosity, at least getting it from point A to point B where we're at. My hope is a lot of my time gets freed up. Having Heather on board to take on some of those other projects helps immensely as well. So kind of resituate, resituating the staff as far as what's going to be happening. But yeah, I think moving forward would be a whole lot easier. That project's been extremely intriguing, the fact that it's grown because of the support.
As opposed to the other.
Usually it's, you start with a pie in the sky and not to keep funneling backwards, but just spend a little time considering.
So I think that makes perfect sense after the election, you know, tied to the council meeting.
Yeah.
Working on my list.
Just make sure the food showed up.
We'll make sure.
How does that make it, by the way?
Yeah, exactly. Anything else on the CIP? Council, please?
No, I'm just.
All right, anything for reports to share? Anybody have anything, councils, committees?
Other than community significance, is that tomorrow, too, the school is opening bids on their point significant project. It'll be interesting to see how many bid and what, how close they are, and to get some alternates and so on. And they're gonna have a special meeting Thursday at 6, I believe, to make a decision, so.
Very interesting for us, too. I will attend just to see.
Get a copy of their bid spreadsheet.
I'm guessing tomorrow, if, hopefully they'll have copies, and I'll be able to kind tally myself. Usually the official tab sheet doesn't come out until they make the decision. So if I can do that, others on, I'll kind of send something officially to the council. But yeah, I'm anxious, obviously, for our project as well, to see how they're handling.
All right, Chris, anything from your report you want to highlight?
Nothing really, other than I will be here Wednesday, just because we're a little bit short-staffed. So I will leave Wednesday after work and travel to Council's office. Heather will be out there earlier in the day, because this is her kind of first planning conference. Nick will be, I will be here through Wednesday, and Nick will be back Wednesday, so Nick will kind of take over, will switch. I don't leave, and he'll kind of take over for me. So it works out quite well, but other than that, like I said, we had the pre-bid meeting and other things for meeting wellness center, and just kind of anxiously waiting in the 30th to see where the numbers come out.
Anybody have any questions?
I just, I just have a question, Chris. It came up in the CDG meeting. There's $41,000 earmarked this year from the hotel motel tax. And if memory serves, that's a little bit of a shortage. I think we usually budget about $60,000 from that. So what I'm wondering, is this a trend, and just the CDG to look at adjusting the budget? Is that, no, is the hotel usage reduced that much? There's just something for you to check into.
Yeah, well, nothing that I'm aware of, other than obviously we made the transition until at first.
Yeah, but it shouldn't, it shouldn't have underfoot on that. So if you would just check into that.
Sure.
Anybody else? Otherwise, no further business as we decide.